Good afternoon and welcome. I'd like to call the meeting into order. This is the regular Planning Commission meeting, June 26, 2025. Could we please have the flag salute? And I'd like to call on Commissioner Gray to lead us in the salute.
Please turn and face the flag. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, we're going to have the oath of office. And I'd like the city clerk to conduct the oath of office for our new commissioner.
Thank you. So if I can just get you to stand, raise your right hand, and then I will read the passage at the end. You can say, "I do," or "I will." Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Thank you. And I'll get your signature on this after the meeting.
Thank you, and welcome, Commissioner Beal. And if you wouldn't mind, just giving us a very brief introduction of yourself.
Hi, my name is Austin Beal. I have a development background. I'm originally from the Gulf Coast of Texas and have resided in California for the better part of about a decade now. Typically, working on anything from sports projects to mixed-use developments. And I've been a resident here in Rancho Mirage for about two and a half years now.
Great, thank you, and again, welcome. And will the city clerk now give us a roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Agostini, Commissioner Beal, Commissioner Gray.
Present.
Vice Chair Bryant.
Present.
And Chair Chantor.
Present.
And we do need a motion to excuse Commissioner Agostini.
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Agostini.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. And we have approval of a minutes next. Do we have a motion to approve? This is the June 12, 2025, meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
And a second?
I'll second.
Should we vote?
One second.
Oh.
Motion carries three zero with Commissioner Beal abstaining.
Great. And now, we're moving into public hearing. And I would like to have Pilar present the staff report. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Staff Report. Excuse me, Commissioner Questions or Comments, please. We'll start with Commissioner Gray.
So I'd like to first initially welcome our newest Commissioner, Mr. Beal. Welcome to our happy little group. Look forward to getting to know you and participating on behalf of the City of Rancho Mirage in making good decisions on the Planning Commission. Welcome, and I hope you like reading long tracts of documents.
It's a pleasure to be here, thank you.
I want to comment also generally. I was thrilled to see this agenda item as the City of Rancho Mirage moves forward in fulfilling its commitment to the City of Rancho Mirage, the State of California, and all of our residents, and providing much-needed affordable housing. In the various campaigns, our city council members and in various applications for council seats, myself included, we all, many of us emphasized as the number-one requirement for the city of, or priority for the City of Rancho Mirage, developing and providing affordable housing, which is so needed for the people that live here and for those who provide vital services. As I look over this particular Planning Commission item and assuming the Commission joins in my ultimate vote, as I'm sure it will be to approve this, and then as it is later approved by the city council, if all that comes to pass, which I think it will, we have made gigantic strides in just the last couple of years to fulfilling, again, what I believe is actually our duty, but also a requirement imposed upon us by the state. I think it's very, very important. It's amazing how much effort the staff has put in, then the Planning Commission and the city council, in order to achieve this. We have moved heaven and earth to comply with lots of somewhat conflicting requirements and also get things done in a funding period that was available to us. So I am just excited and gratified that we've made this kind of progress. I hope we continue and continue to make Rancho Mirage a better place to live. Thanks.
Well said. Commissioner Beal, would you like to have an opportunity to speak?
No, I'm actually okay. I have no further comments.
That's fine. Commissioner Bryant?
Many times, all of us up here have recognized and commented how important the planning staff is to us. It's highly complex. Thank goodness now we don't have the binders with 2,000 pages. We're doing it on a computer now. But still, that doesn't mean their work is any less. And so, again, all of the commissioners, over the years, many times, we comment on our staff. But there's two other people, and there's many people in this city, that do a great job. There's two other people I'd like to do a shout-out. And one is Deanna Mendoza, who is the administrative assistant for the planning department. Deanna handles all the logistics, the meetings, staff support. She keeps all of the staff honest, because you never know about them, you know, that group. And so, Deanna keeps them well lassoed up. And an important thing is she does everything. She's always so helpful, smiling. And when you're interacting with her, not only is she doing her job, but she makes you feel like she likes doing her job, and that's very important. And the other person is our city clerk, Kristi Ramos, who, and clerk is a misnomer, I don't know where that comes from. I looked up, and apparently, for like 100 years, cities have been using that term, and it's just stuck. But Kristi is certainly an integral part of the city government, the council members, the planning, all the meetings. And for the council members and the planning commissioners, as public officials, we're subject to many laws, Brown Act and so on, of the State of California, certifications, and continuing education. And Kristi makes sure that all of us individually, we're making sure that we're meeting those things and the timely and so on. And another thing, again, this is like our third or fourth meeting on the computer. Kristi, I know you were a key part of the team to make this happen. And it took a lot of doing to switch over from the kind of the manual and so on to this. And so, thank you for your, I think, about 10 years of service to the city. And maybe, I think, as I remember, you've been the city clerk for eight years, maybe? Yeah, okay. So thanks a lot. That's it?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. I can't add to what's already been said. I think we're all very excited that we're adding to our affordable housing. And it's very important, and this city has definitely stepped forward in that effort. So I'm proud of Rancho Mirage and the city council, and certainly the staff for all the efforts that go into this, because it isn't easy to work on these projects, as we know. And I apologize for jumping forward earlier. I was so excited that this is on the agenda, that I jumped right to public hearings. So at this point, we're going to move into for a environmental assessment case, number EA 25-0002. And at this time, I'd like to have Pilar give our staff report.
Thank you, Chair Chantor, and good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. For today's consideration, we have the Rancho Mirage Affordable Apartments, a proposed 150-unit family housing development. Before we present the proposed project, I'd like to provide a brief overview of how this affordable housing site was identified. The city's housing element, a part of the general plan, is updated every eight years, as required by the state. It outlines goals, policies, and programs to address local housing needs, including affordable housing. As part of this process, the state assigns each jurisdiction a regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, which quantifies the number of housing units that must be planned for during each cycle. In March 2021, the Southern California Association of Governments adopted the six-cycle RENA covering the 2021 to 2029 planning period. Rancho Mirage was assigned a total of 1,746 units, with 1,076 required to be affordable units. To accommodate this, the city's six-cycle housing element was adopted in March 2022, with minor amendments in July 2022. And it identified nine inventory sites labeled A through I. The proposed project site is within inventory site B, previously referred to as parcel A2. The housing element was certified by the California Department of Housing and Community Development in August 2022. To implement the housing element, the city council adopted an affordable housing overlay on inventory sites B and D, along with related zoning and policy changes. In August 2023, the Housing Authority issued a request for qualifications, seeking proposals to develop at least 200 affordable units on site B, a site which was identified for its high-resource designation by the state, which makes it competitive for key funding programs. However, in late October 2023, staff learned that the designation would be downgraded to moderate resource. To preserve project eligibility and secure site control, the Housing Authority Board approved three disposition and development agreements, the DDDAs, in December 2023. National Core and USA Properties Fund were selected to develop the five-acre project site. The project presented today is a direct result of that process. This slide provides an overview of the city's progress in implementing its affordable housing allocation under the six-cycle RENA. The City of Rancho Mirage is required to plan for 1,076 affordable units by 2029. As of June 2025, a total of 593 units, which amounts to approximately 55% of that requirement, have been entitled or are currently in progress through four key projects. These include Katana, Rosette Apartments, Crossing at Peterson Road, and the proposed project. An additional 250 units are planned through a remaining disposition and development agreement with Blue Companies. Combine these efforts bring the city's planned affordable housing total to 844 units, or 78% of the RENA goal. The proposed project contributes 150 units, which account for 14% of the overall RENA requirement. The site was originally part of a larger 52-acre property that included the Rancho Mirage Dog Park and had split zoning for open space, private park, and high-density residential. To support affordable housing development, the city council approved land use changes. These changes moved the high-density residential designation to the eastern side of the site and consolidated the open-space private park designation on the western side. The project site is located immediately south of the approved Rosette Apartments off of Villa Vale. Now, to move on to the proposed project. This rendering shows the eastern elevation of the development, looking west across the future extension of Villa Vale. The design reflects a desert-modern architectural style, featuring clean lines, flat roofs, and a mix of desert tones that complement the surrounding landscape. The buildings are designed as a three-story walk-ups with recessed balconies and articulated facades that break up the massing and provide visual interest. Thoughtful landscape design incorporates native and drought-tolerant species that are enhanced with boulder groupings, creating an inviting pedestrian realm that blends the natural desert character. On screen, we have the proposed site plan. The project includes two vehicle access points on the northeast and southeast corners, shown in red, that connect to the future extension of Villa Vale. The site is organized around two large courtyards. The eastern courtyard features a pool, a game court, and a one-story poolhouse, while the western courtyard includes a butterfly garden and shaded seating. There are seven walk-up residential buildings, each two to three stories tall, with a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. All 52 ground-floor units meet ADA accessibility standards. In green is the community building, which includes the leasing office, community room, laundry, bike storage, restrooms, and support spaces, all arranged around a shaded plaza. Parking is spread throughout the site, with 219 total spaces, including 10 ADA spaces. 114 are covered by solar carports, and 78 are proposed to be uncovered. All parking areas comply with ADA and EV readiness requirements. Sidewalks and internal paths connect all buildings and amenities, including a pedestrian gate to the west that will link to the future public park. The project provides full perimeter fire access with 24-foot-wide drive aisles, including two turnaround areas that meet fire department requirements. All buildings are within the required 150-foot hose reach. This slide shows the two access points. The northern entrance will feature a sliding vehicle gate and an adjacent pedestrian gate, while the southern exit will use a telescopic gate and provide a secondary pedestrian access point. This slide shows the six proposed unit types, which include one, two, and three-bedroom layouts. The units are designed with open-concept living and dining areas, full kitchens and private patios or balconies. Each unit type is repeated across multiple buildings to provide a balanced distribution of housing sizes throughout the site. This slide shows the building elevations for Building 1, a three-story walk-up design in desert-modern style. The building features a mix of materials, including smooth-and-sand-finished stucco, stackstone veneer, and dark metal accents. Recessed balconies, vertical towers, and varied textures help break up the massing and add visual interest. Parapet walls provide clean roof lines and screen any future rooftop equipment. This is a typical floor plan. Each floor includes a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom layouts, with bike storage and electrical rooms located on the ground floor. All first-floor units are ADA-compatible and designed to meet mobility-accessible requirements. However, no elevators are proposed for this or any other residential building. No rooftop mechanical equipment is currently proposed, but the parapet walls have been designed to fully screen any future rooftop additions. This slide shows the elevations for Buildings 2 and 5, which are identical in layout and share a cohesive design approach, consistent with the rest of the development. Both buildings follow a desert-modern style. The color palette includes warm browns, off-whites, and muted greens that blend into the desert contacts. Vertical stone towers and recessed balconies add further visual interest and help break up the building mass, while parapets and overhangs provide additional solar protection. The maximum building height is approximately 39 feet 4 inches. This slide presents the elevations for Building 6, a three-story residential building, consistent with the desert-modern style, and incorporates the same design vocabulary as the rest of the project. The maximum height is approximately 36 feet to the top of the parapet. Building 7 serves as the community building and is the most architecturally distinctive structure in the project. The exterior features a blend of materials and vertical stone elements that add visual rhythm. Neutral colors like muted greens, off-whites, and browns contribute to a cohesive palette. The building reaches a maximum height of 39 feet, with lower roof lines that help transition to the adjacent pool and courtyard areas. This slide illustrates a conceptual landscape plan, which is designed to create a connected network of open spaces that foster community interaction and enhance walkability. The primary entry drive at the northeast corner is lined with palm trees and native landscaping, leading to a loop circulation drive with clearly-marked pedestrian crossings and clusters of trees for shade and visual interest. Near the community building, a shaded plaza features seating and native trees, offering an inviting gathering spot. The central courtyard, located between Buildings 2 and 5, serves as the primary recreation zone, with a large pool, shaded lounge areas, and colorful plantings, including tall palms and flowering trees. South of the pool is a game court framed by raised planters and bench seating. On the west side of the, on the west side, on the west side, between Buildings 3 and 4, is a more passive courtyard with a butterfly garden and a barbecue area, as well as winding paths that connect shaded seating areas. The planting palette prioritizes low-water-use species, such as Palo Verde, Mesquite, Ironwood, Fairy Duster, and Texas Ranger, which complement the desert environment. The project was evaluated under the California Environmental Quality Act, and a mitigated negative declaration, an MND, was determined to be the appropriate level of environmental review. The MND analyzed potential impacts across various environmental categories with the incorporation of mitigation measures related to biological resources, cultural and tribal cultural resources. And the project's environmental impacts were found to be less than significant. The proposed project was reviewed by the Architectural Review Working Group on May 27, 2025, where comments were provided regarding pedestrian circulation and materials, as well as shading strategies. In response, conditions of approval 25 through 29 have been added to address these concerns during the final development plan review and prior to building permit issuance. Public hearing notices were distributed on June 18, 2025. To date, we received one public comment, which has been made available to the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission make the action as shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions. And now, I would like to invite the applicant up to the podium to introduce themselves. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Taylor. I'm here with National Core, with the Design and Ownership Team here today. We're delighted to be here for this item. It's a pleasure to join you. Pilar did such a wonderful job talking about the project. What I really want to focus on is introducing ourselves as a team, talking about our strategy to support the long-term success of this community, and then also express our deep appreciation to the city for making this opportunity possible. Oh, sorry, I didn't realize you did that already. Okay, next slide. Okay. The community reflects a strong spirit of partnership and collaboration. National Community Renaissance, or National Core, and USA Properties Fund have, which are two recognized leaders in quality affordable housing in our own rights, have teamed up to bring this community to life and to stay with the community throughout the lifetime of the project. We've also brought together an experienced, mission-aligned, design and development team, including RRM Design Group, the architect and the landscape architect, Atlas Civil Design, the community civil engineer, Terra Nova Planning and Research, our civil consultant. The team has worked very closely with city staff and Architectural Review Working Group to design a community that's not just functional and beautiful, but also fits within the neighborhood and serves Rancho Mirage families well. Representatives from each of these partners are here with me today to provide any deeper background and answer your questions as needed. So we provided a little bit of background on our two organizations. I'll toggle back and forth. We are the main co-developers, co-partners with the city on this effort. National Core is the nonprofit housing. We are a leader in nonprofit housing throughout the nation, with over 30 years of development experience, based primarily in Southern California. We know what it's like to provide quality services and service-enriched housing in this region. We have a portfolio in the low-desert Coachella Valley community and other desert communities as well. I'm so excited to continue our relationship here. USA Properties is our partner, as I mentioned. We're very similar in that we are full-service organizations, so we both specialize in the early stages, all the way through property management and compliance, but using our strengths in this property to benefit residents. So USA Properties will serve as the general contractor and general partner, and then National Core will be the property manager. Okay, so as both developers and long-term owners and managers, we know that a successful community doesn't start with construction, doesn't end with construction. It depends on thoughtful, consistent, and long-term operations. And so, I just want to take a couple of minutes to talk about our management approach. So National Core will serve as a long-term property manager. We are a trusted nonprofit property management organization. That is a trusted partner of cities and communities throughout Southern California and beyond, including, as of very recently, the Rancho Mirage Housing Authority. So we were recently selected to be the city's partner in managing your residential portfolio and are in the process of that onboarding and are just really excited to serve Rancho Mirage residents on your Housing Authority properties. So a few key aspects I want to spend a little bit of time on to our property management approach. One is our smoke-free policy. All of our properties are smoke-free, and residents agree to that when they sign in, when they sign their lease. We have a professional onsite property management team, including the live-in property manager, which becomes the eyes and ears of the community, because they're there, you know, 24/7 for residents. And then, an incredibly important part of our approach is our leasing process. That includes tenant screening and background checks, unit occupancy standards that residents must agree to, and our approach to parking management. And we know parking is incredibly important to a successful community, especially since we're the ones that have to manage it. And we want this to be a community that is desired. And so, with that, we took a lot of time to design our parking facilities to not only exceed minimum standards for affordable housing, but also just, it's their size to reflect the demand that we anticipate based on our parking utilization studies in the desert, in suburban communities, which show about one unit per, one parking spot per unit, on average, across our suburban family projects. And so, at a parking standard of one and a half per unit, we feel that this should exceed the demand. But we have a couple of things in place to make sure that that's the case. So when a resident is signing their lease and they want a car, there's an addendum that is added to their lease. So their adherence to the parking management is part of their ability to live here. And so, as part of the permit process, they have to provide their license, registration, proof that it's operable. And this is strictly enforced. We are not afraid to tow vehicles that are not supposed to be there, because we need to take care of our residents and the people who are, you know, who are following the rules. So each unit is assigned a parking spot, and then the remaining are in, there's an extra pool. And then, it's a lottery system for additional parking spots. So we're happy to talk about parking later, but just wanted to take an extra time to talk about our strategy there, to make sure that parking is managed, you're not seeing overflow onto Villa Vale, other communities, and that this doesn't become a nuisance to other residents. So our property management approach really is grounded in performance and accountability. We manage from an owner's perspective through robust budget oversight, monthly financial reviews, and strategic performance tracking. We ensure that these projects remain community assets in perpetuity. And finally, National Core's sister nonprofit organization, the Hope Through Housing Foundation, is onsite. They're on all of our communities to coordinate with local organizations supportive services on our community here. We envision extending our partnership with Desert Recreation District. We serve residents at our properties in La Quinta and Indio, where we have after-school homework programming and summer programs, where Desert Rec comes into our communities and provides those services free of charge to residents. And so, we have already been negotiating with the Desert Rec. It is a newer territory, it is a new region for them, and they are very excited about the opportunity to expand their services. the opportunity to expand their services through this partnership. So, that's something you can expect too as we get closer. And all of the services, again, are onsite in the community room, and they're designed to promote the financial, well-being, economic mobility, and health and wellness of our residents, really to help move them towards self-sufficiency. So, finally, this, we're here because of the city's vision. You have had the foresight to reserve these, this property as affordable housing, and you've taken the extraordinary step of shaping, you know, the conditions to make sure that it's actually financeable and that it actually is a project that will, that we can bring to life. And so, we're truly so grateful for your leadership in this area, and again, we're just grateful for the opportunity. We're here to answer any questions. And Pilar, I don't know if you want me to jump into questions right now, or if we should wait and...
We'll, we'll ask you back once, once the Commissioners have, have given us their questions.
Great. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And we will be asking you some questions.
Awesome.
Sure. Okay. At this time with the city clerk, please open for a public comment.
Of course. So, I got one speaker card from Brad Anderson.
Good afternoon. Brad Anderson, City Ranch and Mirage. I did submit some written comments mainly on the process of the public hearing aspect of how the city conducts that, and, and the willingness not to do it correctly. So, mainly, I'm in opposition to this project, and I have been from the beginning, mainly because of the cost to the city residents overall. I understand the city wants to comply with SCAGs regulations, I guess, and, and, and I'm not really a fan. So, but anyway, I, I think this to Session 30 and, and IID and the substation and allotments and the special meetings just to get this moving, and the fees not being collected by the city. So, they're going to make this happen. It's going to happen, but I'm concerned of how it's happening and the cost to every residents in the city, and they will never, never receive any kind of a benefit from that, I believe. And I'm grateful for the presentation, for the nonprofit on, on the requirements that they're going to abide by or have the residents of the new community abide by. But all in all, I think it's going to be a detriment to the city, just like Palm Desert. It's, it's a, I understand the area, well, there's several areas, but the area we're talking about today. Anyway, I'm just in opposition to this, and, and mainly because of the cost to the residents, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to provide public testimony on this public hearing item? No additional speakers.
All right. Great. Now, I'd like to ask each of the Commissioners to make comments or ask questions, and I'll start with Commissioner Gray.
I guess I'm always first now. This is really directed towards our planning department. One of the things I noticed in what seems to be an extremely well-thought-out and planned project, and I also believe this probably comes in part due to other state mandates, and I also want to, I also want to preface this by saying this, that I drive an electric car, and I'm in favor of charging stations, but there seem to be a really high number of charging stations that might be disproportionate to the actual use of electric vehicles in the population, particularly given the recent change in attitudes starting at the federal government about supporting electric cars, and in fact, they're, an attempt to ban California's movement towards all electric vehicles. So, having said that, why so many charging stations?
This is a requirement. So, the applicant is, they have 23 EV charging stations, and then there's 88 spaces that are EV-ready. This is a requirement through our municipal code and also California Building Code, so they'd have to adhere to that. We reviewed the, the project against those two codes.
This seems like a, sort of a little bit of an excessive expense. Again, even though I am in favor of electric vehicles, is it so high because they want to make electric vehicles more accessible to renters as well as to owners who can have their own charging stations? Is that the idea?
There's, there's no relief for affordable housing development in this regard, so they had to follow what is standard, development standards through, throughout for any multifamily complex or anything.
Thank you. A somewhat related question. For the residents of this project and the adjacent projects, and I think we talked about this a little bit before, what public transportation options are available? I guess specifically it would be buses because there's not really anything else around here. What currently exists, and is there any plan to enhance the availability of things like bus transportation?
So, this project, as well as the project to the north, the Rosetta Apartments, we sent comment letters to Sunline asking them if they, they would like to add an additional bus stop. Sunline does, does not want to add an additional bus stop regarding these, these projects. The nearest bus stop is off of Dyna Shore, about 1.3 miles from the project site itself. But eventually, we, we, we might revisit the conversation with Sunline once the third project comes into play. But as of now, Sunline has, has not recommended an additional bus stop.
If I may, Commissioner, to try and mitigate that just a little bit, hello, to try and mitigate that just a little bit, there is a cut-through through the shopping center to provide easier access to the existing bus stop that exists off of Dyna Shore.
But it's still a mile away?
Less, it's about 0.3.
0.3?
Yes.
And then my last question, and again, just want to say I come to this as essentially a non-smoker. Is there any provision, and this might be to the applicant, for a smoking area or anything, anywhere within the project, or is everything within the boundaries of the affordable housing non-smoking, which means people have to go out onto the streets to do that?
Taylor, if I can ask you to, to come up to, to the podium, and now that, that the questions are being asked?
Yeah. In certain circumstances and communities, we have provided a smoking area. Right now, we do not have one planned here, so it would be strictly enforced property-wide.
Okay. Just seems to me that in order to avoid sort of violations, and there's still a substantial amount of people that smoke unfortunately.
Yeah.
But it, it seems like making some provision like that, at least having an area, would be a smart move.
Yeah. We can absolutely do that, provide a spot on site away from the, away from the buildings and other amenities.
Well, other, other than those comments, I'll defer to Murray for landscaping observations and other comments, but seems like an incredibly well-designed, well-planned project. Extremely grateful to have the presentation about the work of the nonprofits in facilitating this, and I'm really happy to have you all here as our guests. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Beal.
My question is geared towards the planning department. Do we, this might be premature, do we have a sense of what building code we will fall under, one, if we, if and when we were to move into construction?
It would depend on when the project is being submitted for permitting.
Yes.
More specifically, the follow-up question is, in terms of pieces of equipment and devices, do we have any sense of, is this fully electric devices, or are these plumbed with gas lines?
I'll, I'll defer that to the architectural team if they have some insight on that. We, we haven't received construction plans. That's something that gets prepared in the final development plan, but perhaps our architectural team can shine a further light on it.
Just as a little bit of background, I think that some developers have started looking into what may be needed in the new codes, but we haven't started the update process quite yet.
Good afternoon. I'm Amanda Stoller with RRM Design Group, and yes, this project will be all-electric.
Thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Bryant.
Pilar, thank you for the early introduction of the background of affordable housing in the city, our mandate from the state, and what the city has done in terms of setting aside the total lands, where we are in the percentage, the thousand or so of the four lower tiers, and we're somewhere 700, 800 underway, and it's an eight-year housing cycle, so we're, we're way ahead. Many cities in the California are so far behind, it's not even funny, and some of them, it's probably going to be impossible. How do you build affordable housing in Newport Beach or Beverly Hills when a, a lot costs, a building lot costs $2 or $3 million for a building lot? So, it's, it's a very difficult situation. The city has made Herculean efforts to enable affordable housing. Yes, the trade-off is cost, because there is no such thing as affordable housing, when the, anywhere in California and, and certainly along the coastlines of the country, but the last month's desert housing report, I think, showed the median, median price of a house valley-wide was detached, was maybe 500 and some thousand, or attached, and 700,000. Ranch and Mirage is probably pushing $900,000. And so, of course, there is no such thing as affordable housing, and so it's a monumental effort on behalf of the city and developers to try to make housing available, which is important. It's important from a social standpoint. It's also important for a business standpoint, because our businesses here are constantly, you know, they, they need people to work. Think about the hotels, a, you know, the housekeeping staff for what they make. They have to drive a long way, so it, it's important all the way around, but of course, there is a trade-off in terms of cost to the, the city, because there are massive subsidies, not only from the city's standpoint, but they have to get funding from the state and that sort of thing. Sort of a big-picture thing, you mentioned what our mandate is. The, the cities in the valley here, I think it's 31,000. Ben, is that the right number, 31,000 and change of all the...
For the, for the Rena numbers, yes, around there.
Yeah. So, when you take 31,000 units in the valley and just take per hundred thousand dollars of subsidy, just per hundred thousand, you're talking about $3.1 billion. And so, I don't know what it's cost to subsidize, you know, 300,000, 400,000. So, we're talking 10, 12, 13 billion dollars to make all the mandates for this cities in the valley come about. So, a very difficult thing to do. So, I think if it's appropriate time, I do have questions for the developer, if you want to come up, or, yeah, so I do have a few questions. First, while I do have a lot of questions, and once again, prior to all of our sessions, hearings, the staff makes time available to speak with each of the Commissioners individually, and I did have with Mina, Pilar, and Ben the other day, I actually had about two dozen questions after reading through this about four times to get through, to really understand the nuances of it. And so, thank you again, staff, for, you know, helping me out and putting up with So, these are not all in a row, and you did answer some in your presentation, so thank you, some of your questions, some of the things you said. I actually had questions on, like the services that are provided to the people, the parking and so on. So, if, if I ask a question that's proprietary, please, you don't have to answer.
No problem.
And so I'm going to try not to, I'm trying to ask general questions, but I understand some things are proprietary, and so don't, don't answer that, and you won't hurt my feelings.
I appreciate that.
What, what does it cost to build a unit excluding the land in this project or some others?
Oh, sorry. Excluding the land, well, the building costs can start at 250 a door. That's, but I would say for this one, we're, we're anticipating a total development cost, which would include the land at about 450,000 a door.
Okay. And what would the, for a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, what would be typical rental rates for the residents?
Yeah. I can bring up Nora, who can, who can bring that up, but it really will depend on the final AMI breakdown.
Yeah.
So, all of them will, and the building, and the bedroom size. I don't know if, so, it'll, they'll range from, I don't, do we have the, sorry. So, great, then, then she can pull it up. She actually has the, the rents up in front of her.
If it's just general, I'm not trying to be...
No, not at all. That's a good question.
...minute, just kind of general.
It is a great question. And good afternoon. My name's Alexa Washburn. I'm Chief Development Officer with National Core. And so based on our preliminary pro forma, and it's based on the household income, which typically at our family properties, right, we have anywhere from one individual to two individuals or four individuals. And so these apartment home community is based on 80% of the area median income and below, right? So, these are families, for a typical family of four, that would mean a maximum income of about 89,000 per year. And then we also serve at the lower end families, a family of four, that could be earning 30% of the area median income, which would be about 33,000. Now, what that results in, in terms of rent, is typically, we don't want our residents to pay more than 30% of their income on rent. So, for the rents, we're looking at for a one-bedroom at extremely low income, so these are folks that earn 30% of the area median income, their rent would be about 550,000. On the higher end for a one-bedroom, for those that are making 70% of the area median income, their rent would be about 1,380. For a two-bedroom unit, on the lower income end, we're looking at approximately 650. On the higher end for a two-bedroom, about 1,650. On the low end for a three-bedroom, about 750 per month, and on the higher end for a three-bedroom, approximately 1,900 per month.
And if these were market rates, and you don't have to go through one, two, three, and everything else, just, would the market rates be two times the rate subsidized rate?
Yeah. Actually, I'm a Coachella Valley resident, and so I can say there's not a lot of rentals, anything under 2,000 right now, and that's for probably a one-bedroom for market rate. But for three-bedroom, you know, we're in the 3,000s pretty, pretty easily, so significantly reduced.
And again, excuse me for the, I'm not trying to bore people with the detail, but it, it does highlight the difficulty a developer has bringing on affordable housing as well as a city.
Yeah.
And so, again, there's, it's always a cost issue and so on, but one of the fears I have is that if the cities don't meet their mandates in time, is the state going to step in and say, "You have to do it." And so, is it better to do it now than eight years from now, have the city, have the state mandate, "You've got to do it." And we have to tax the residents to do it, and so, anyway, so that's the reason, kind of my question. The management, and thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that information. I think you get a good idea of the, I had a lot of questions about the screening of the tenants, what your lease agreement says, how you control the occupancy, are these families, so you don't have four unrelated people in a unit, and how you control that, both through the lease and if they violate it, your ability to rectify it, so to speak, because that would turn the area into a not very pleasant environment. And, and part of the goal is not only to provide housing at a cost they can make, but to provide a quality environment, because ultimately, the goal is to have the people grow, move, you know, get better, grow, get better in their circumstances, kind of up and out.
Yeah.
And then get into the mainstream of housing, although it is expensive, so, you know, that's, I think that's part of the goal. I, I think you did, you really answered the question, how you, you monitor that and you control that. And again, if you've been doing this for a long time, you know that there are people who will try to cheat, and so you have to be, you have to hold your ground on that sort of thing. and so you have to be, you have to hold your ground on that sort of thing. On the parking, I know you gave a, what you think is the number of spaces per unit. I just did a quick, if you said that there was a car for each one-bedroom and each two and three-bedroom, there were two cars. I know that's higher than what you said. That's about two hundred and fifty-four spaces, and you have two hundred and nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
And so I believe, do you issue parking pit permits?
Yes, we do. So there is one spot assigned to each unit.
Yeah.
And a resident can claim that by signing a parking addendum to their lease. And that makes it extremely enforceable. So as they're signing, they're, you know, providing the license, registration, proof of operation. And again, there'll be one per unit, and then an option to enter a lottery for an additional spot for the remaining spots. So there will be an opportunity to get more than one.
So if someone's in a three-bedroom and they need two cars, they've assigned one, but they enter in a lottery so that you have your two hundred and nineteen spaces, I think it is.
Right.
You're only going to issue two hundred and nineteen permits?
Exactly, yes, exactly. Yes, sorry.
Okay.
Yep.
And as part of the off-site improvements, do you have to improve the avail along your?
Yes, so we will take the avail from the Pacific West property line all the way down our complete front edge to the southern tip.
And how wide, Mina, that may, how wide would that road be, Mina?
It's thirty-six feet wide, so it can accommodate two lanes of traffic as well as parking on either side.
Okay, and parking, okay. Because obviously, if you don't control the parking, you know, the avail is going to be lined with cars.
Exactly, we don't want that to happen, yeah.
And that won't look too good.
Mm-mm.
So, you know, if you run out, maybe you could rent some spaces from the movie theater.
Exactly, I know.
They never fill.
Absolutely.
They never fill up, so to keep the cars off of the avail. All right. In the, and again, I'm kind of jumping around a little bit. In the plans, I looked at the plans, and it looked like there's a, in each unit, there's a wall mount or split unit, air conditioner split unit?
Yep.
But it looked like there was only one. And if you have one in the living room, it's certainly not going to cool the bedrooms.
Mm-hmm.
So how do you plan on air conditioning the entire unit?
Right, no, I'm glad that you brought that up, because it came up in the architectural review as well. So we ran this by our Director of Sustainability, and he oversees our portfolio, including our desert portfolio. And what we do is we just size the split system to be about fifteen percent over demand for a given unit. And so we will just appropriately size the system. But there aren't any reservations as far as, from our Director of Sustainability's perspective, that it'll be enough, because we also have a really robust and well-insulated building envelope. We took a lot of attention to reduce, you know, energy loss.
Mina, are there building codes to, or to require that? I have split units in some of my garages that are like one, built one thing. I mean, not in my house, but the others have rigor outside and so on. But if you have two rooms, no matter how much you push out in the room, is it really going to go, and again, I'm not an expert. I don't think it's going to go to, from what I've seen and, you know, my experience, it's not going to go to the bedroom and the bathroom.
Yeah, so one thing I will mention is that these are, this is our standard approach. So we have a basis of design, and so we're doing this all over Southern California, including desert and low-desert communities. So, and it has not been, has not been an issue for us.
And are there code, Mina, are there codes that they have to show that, you know, somebody goes in and tests and make sure that it's actually working? They don't freeze out the people in the living room and the people in the bedroom?
Good point.
Don't get cooling?
Yeah, the project, once it goes through, is ready for plan check and is going through plan check, will have to meet all California building codes, including Title 24.
Okay, all right. And David, I know you would be very disappointed at me if I didn't bring up.
There's one more clarification that we need to add.
Okay.
Thank you, Amanda, again. Yeah, we do have those condenser units, and we do have vent systems that will go into each of the rooms. So those will be air-conditioned. We also have operable windows for ventilation as well, along with solar shading on those, so window shrouds and window awnings.
Okay, okay, all right, that answers that.
Thank you.
So David, I know you're waiting for this. I noticed on your landscape plan, you have a lot of cactus and thorny plants within three feet of a pedestrian area. That's, you can't do that in the city of Rancho Mirage, so.
We'll take a second look and.
Yeah, those all have to be moved out. And David, I know you were just dying for me to say that, right?
You have made my week.
Okay, all right, okay.
Okay, so no prickly kids running around, all right.
Yeah, yeah.
Murray's a little bit worried about older adults, but he cares about the kids as well.
Yeah, on their skateboards that they're not supposed to do in the interior area, but they're going to do it anyway, because kids are kids. How do you guarantee that the, you have the four categories of low income? Presumably, there'll be a mix of the different levels of income people.
Yeah.
How do you monitor or guarantee that when they start out? One, when they start out, how do you prove their income?
Yeah.
To be sure that they're in that level? And then a year or two years later, if their income has risen, do they not qualify for that unit anymore?
Mm-hmm, yeah, great question. So residents will qualify when they're applying. In order to get either in the waiting list or, you know, to be an applicant, they'll have to provide proof of income for every person that is living there. And so our property management team goes through and makes sure that they don't exceed the income standards for each unit, and that they can reasonably be expected to pay, so that they don't earn too little either. So that happens at move-in. And then there's an annual recertification process that happens, where a lot of these requirements are being checked again. If, you know, we don't kick out a resident if they come in over income, they're allowed to stay in the unit, even if it does exceed the limit. However, when the unit becomes available or another unit becomes available, it needs to go back to that original standard. So it's meant to not discourage growth, you know, in economic mobility by having a hard stop and to give some people some cushion.
And if their income does go up, you know, I'm not saying you throw them out.
Yeah.
I'm not asking that, but do you raise their rent?
We can, you can speak to that a little bit more.
So I did want to clarify that this is driven by the financing that's used for affordable housing. So our low-income housing tax credits, our tax-exempt bonds, any type of public sources, they regulate that if you become over income during your residency at our apartment homes, that we can't just, you know, kick you out, that they still have the right to stay there. And as Taylor said, that's primarily to ensure housing stability. But we also provide the range, the income range at our apartment homes, because say a family moves in, and at that time, at move-in, they're forty percent of the area median income. But over the, a couple of years that they've lived there, their income has increased to sixty percent of the area median income. Well, we still have units within our apartment home, right, that accommodates up to eighty percent of the area median income. I also wanted to note that in the very few cases where we have residents that start to earn a hundred percent of the area median income or more, and they continue to stay within our apartment home communities, this is where our Hope Through Housing Foundation is critical. And what we do is we identify those households, and we work with them to save and really give them the financial education to essentially launch them into, you know, sustainable homeownership. So we've had many of our families that have start to increase their earnings. We work with them, and then we've placed them into homeownership or just self-sufficiency in terms of market-rate apartment homes. So that's really where the services come in handy, and we have, we focus on that economy, because that's our goal, right? We call ourselves a launching pad, not a landing pad.
And over time, obviously, your operating costs increase. And so since this is restricted rentals, how do you deal with that? So that you don't hit the, your rentals are stable, but your operating costs are rising. How do you deal with that?
Yeah, we do have the ability to increase rents on an annual basis. We don't necessarily do that annually, right? But they're also limited. We're still regulated on how much we can increase rents and ensure that our residence, it's still affordable to them in terms of their income match. So that's how we ensure the financial sustainability of the property.
And so I guess you've been doing this for a long time, over many years. Obviously, if you look at HOAs and so on, anybody's been involved in one, it starts out like a mouse and ends up as an elephant, the operating cost, so that you are able to cover your costs and you don't go bankrupt.
And that's why we have reserves. So we're also required to have reserves. And for each unit, we have a five hundred dollars annually that's put into a reserve, as well as a three-months operating reserve that continues to increase over the life of the project. So that's to ensure that these are sustainably, sustainable financially over the life of the project.
Yeah, there's not a question, but you did answer it when you were talking about the services that are offered through this nonprofit.
Mm-hmm.
And that was one of my questions, that's very important, that whether it's, you know, computer training, basic banking, English-speaking, social, connecting them with social services and so on. And so you did answer, you have, there's a nonprofit entity that does that?
Yes, that's our sister nonprofit, Hope Through Housing Foundation. So we sit under the same umbrella, we're in, we're the same, in the same building and organization, but they're onsite, they provide those services within the community room onsite.
Are they doing this for other places that you have?
Every single one of our properties, and we have eleven thousand units in our portfolio.
And are they funded enough to continue doing it?
Correct, yes, it's a part of our operating budget. So it's built in, and then we, it's built into the operating budget, a per-unit cost for services.
Okay.
We, in addition to that, we also do fundraising to enhance certain properties as well.
Okay, all right, well, good, that's a wonderful thing to have. Do you ever require residents to donate time to maintain the project?
We don't require that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but there are volunteer opportunities.
Again, this is one, if it strays into proprietary, you said it's at four hundred and some thousand dollars a unit to develop. How much of it is subsidized versus how much of it is equity of the developer? And again, if that's proprietary, you don't have to answer?
No, it's not proprietary, you know, just a general percentage, right? So for this particular project, as Taylor had mentioned, it's about four hundred and fifty thousand per unit. And actually, the land cost is essentially being donated by the city, which is a big subsidy. But you're, you have about for, you know, you have about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand, that's additional subsidy, in addition to your tax credit equity and your permanent debt, your loan, your permanent loan on the property.
I'm sorry, so you're saying of the four fifty, two fifty is subsidized?
Correct.
And two hundred is developer equity, so to speak, private funding?
Correct.
Okay, 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 all right. Those are my questions, thank you for bearing with me.
No, it was great questions, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. Those are great questions. In fact, you answered a number of the questions I had. And when I met with the staff, I was particularly focused on the resources. And you did cover a lot of that, things like, you know, parking, for example. And I'm still a little concerned personally that there may not be adequate parking. That's always a challenge, I know. But maybe you could take a look at that and see if there's any way to squeeze in a few more spots. And also, I was looking at schools and grocery shopping and transportation, too. And I think that the staff answered all my questions on those issues when we met earlier this week. The project seems very well-designed. I particularly think that the solar protection and the sun orientation is good. That's important, especially if we just have one air conditioner unit in those units. But I'm sure you'll work that out as well. And the only other thing I'd like to mention is, someone mentioned benefits and value. And I think there is a great benefit and value to our community, especially Rancho Mirage. We're right in the middle of the valley. And since the pandemic, there's been a lot of challenges trying to get employees. And businesses are constantly competing with other cities for employees. So having affordable housing here, especially because we have so much hospitality industry that's lower-paid, I think it's very important to be able to support people who work in that industry, and that thus supports our businesses right here in Rancho Mirage. Okay, so commissioners, do you have any other questions? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 2025-PC-Next in Order, recommending that the City Council take the following actions. One, adopt Resolution Number 2025-Next in Order, adopting and approving the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and mitigated negative declaration, SCH Number 2025-050959, for the proposed project based on environmental assessment, Case Number EA25-0002. And two, adopt Resolution Number 2025-Next in Order, approving preliminary development plan, Case Number PDP25-002, regarding the proposed Rancho Mirage affordable apartments.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and we'll vote at this time. Motion carries for zero. Great, thank you, and thank you all for coming today. It was very helpful, give us all the information we needed. All right, now we have the non-agenda public comments section. And this is a time where a public can speak on any items not already on the agenda, and there is a three-minute time limit. Do we have anyone here for that purpose? Yes, Brad Anderson.
Good afternoon, again, Brad Anderson, currently over in the city of Rancho Mirage. I just wanted to take this opportunity to get on my soapbox and just complain a little bit more. I'm really concerned this, the City Council meeting and now the Planning Commission meeting has realigned the agenda, as you're aware of, and pushed non-agenda public comments from the beginning, towards the beginning of the meeting, towards the end of the meeting. And there was no public discussion concerning that movement of this city policy, I guess. A lot of the subcommittees remained having public comments at the beginning, which they may change later, hopefully not. I'm concerned, because this is, seems like deliberate action from city administrators to disenfranchise the public, that's my belief from attending these meetings and possibly speaking at them, too. I would hope that you would advocate for possibly having maybe two public comments, one at the beginning and one at the end. They're all government agencies that do that in California, I think the Water Department or Water Board do. And that would provide the public the opportunity to participate at the beginning and the end. Not everybody can sit through a meeting, a public meeting of this type, especially at the daytime or the hour that you have it in the afternoon. So I would advocate for that, and hopefully you will, too. And I think, oh, I just want to comment, too, about the commissioner comments. Usually, usually, if the public or non-agenda public comments at the end of the meeting or towards the end of the meeting or towards the end of the agenda of the meeting, the commissioner comments or council comments or director's comments should be at the end, too. So maybe that's something that can be considered for future movement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? That was the only speaker.
All right, it is now three-ten, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for being here today.